Okay, City of Forest Park Virtual Council Work Session, October 19, 2020. No above the line items, we have two below. State Capitol and our local transportation improvement programs. This is Sylvester and we got contractual agreements with Herbie. Either one of you got anything I know, or Don, do you have anything I knows that you want to tell us about?
The, I can, I can leave it to the, to the councilors if they like, but these are fairly routine items. Uh, we do one, pretty much every year about this time. Uh, the first being the, um, uh, the request for the, uh, for the road funding. That request is, uh, especially for Kemper Road. And, uh, it's a request that basically allows city council. In order for us to request funding, they, the, the folks require us to at least have something on, on record that, that city council acknowledged that we, um, that we are sending in the requests. And then if we do receive the funding, that we were, that we have the funds available for our portion of the, of the project. The other ones are for our annual contracts that we have. It's an hourly rate contract for our other engineering firms. And, um, they are, um, basically, once a year, we pass a resolution or there's a resolution that says that these are the new rates. We're not under any obligation to use these firms, but if we do, uh, these are the rates that we would pay. They are essentially our city engineers and, um, depending on the project, we use different types of engineers. Have a few firms under, under contract just in case we need them. And, uh, that's what these, these contracts are basically just, uh, it's a, it sets the rate, uh, if we need to use engineering firms into the future. Um, the last one is that Mr. Dieters is here. Um, the, uh, with regards to the gas aggregation. So essentially going to allow us to, um, put in place council's approval. And then, um, allows me the ability to sign a contract pending, um, if and when the market, uh, turns allows us to be able to be agile and nimble and to take advantage of the market, uh, on a moment's notice so that we can, uh, enter into the aggregation agreements and, and essentially set the rate for the next, uh, for the contract period. And this just allows me to sign that contract.
Mr. Sylvester or Mr. Herbie, you got anything that you want to add, tell us about?
Well, just in question on that, uh, the 230,000, that those, uh, those maximum dollars already kind of earmarked or identified. And, and now we looking at, uh, applying for the fund to offset the total costs.
Yes, we will, we will apply for those funds. Um, a lot of times you don't get the entire amount that you request. So, um, but normally it's a percentage, so, um, we, we hope to get it, but we're looking at a couple of different pots of money. Um, so that we can put one big pot together, including ours, that would allow us to, to do the, um, uh, the project as a whole. If we don't get it, then our money then obviously goes toward other projects that we, that we, uh, that we can get. Um, if we can leverage our money with this money that we've applied for, then, uh, that's the best way to go. And we can, we can really get some, some good, big projects done. But if we don't get this money, uh, we'll still do portions of that project plus other projects as well.
Anybody else? Yes?
I just was curious. Uh, I was surprised when I saw these engineering contracts. Is this being done a little earlier this year?
Um, I asked Dave that and he said, no, normally it's done around this time. And I think a lot of times it might be done maybe in November.
Yeah, I just was surprised when I saw it. This just seems early.
Yeah, we're kind of in the process of, I think Dave's trying to, to wrap up a lot of things that he's had on his plate. And he just wanted to make sure that this didn't fall through the cracks. So it's, uh, it's a good time to get it finished and, uh, uh, said, you know, sets it, sets us up so that we can, uh, uh, have this kind of check this box and be done with it.
It's, uh, usually not our first meeting in November, so we're just, we, we're only one meeting ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, a couple of things, uh, if we don't have anything on that, a couple of things, just informational. Uh, you probably got an email from Sally that you needed to contact Rob to set up, uh, time with him to go, uh, get to do that training because we're switching over to, uh, and the, uh, the agenda program is being switched over. Uh, I can tell you, it takes about 10, it took me about 15 minutes and given me and technology, that's probably at least five minutes longer than it would take anybody else. So if you have not contacted Rob, uh, please do so. Secondly, uh, you probably got an email from either Chief Jones or, uh, Jermaine, uh, about a, a situation that we had last week. Uh, obviously in his email or neither will I mention the names of the people. But I just wanted to tell you, um, for, you know, that this, this was a, a situation where our, uh, first responders responded in the way that they should have. They did an outstanding job. It's just, um, it's unfortunate that people don't get this side of what our people do. Uh, I can tell you, uh, just watching, I think this was, uh, Captain Martin's crew was on that day. And watching these guys interact with those four kids, um, it was, it was like these kids were at Disneyland and they had all these, uh, these guys waiting on them hand and foot. It was, uh, and, and probably the best thing, uh, not the best thing, but one of the most gratifying things to me was the lady purposely chose to come to Forest Park for help because she knew she could get it. She had heard about, uh, some of our programs, the, uh, safe house program, the We Thrive program. And because she was aware of what we do and how we do it, that's why she came to us for help. And, uh, she got it and she got a lot of it from our people. So, uh, in my mayor's report, I will officially thank them, but I just wanted to let you know, if you did not get that letter, uh, uh, that email from Jermaine, or if you have not read it, take time to do it. Because it was, uh, it was a very, very good job those guys did.
Yeah.
So.
You know, if you, one of the things you, just a little bit after that, uh, chief or, uh, mayor, uh, it really gets down to some of the things that, um, that the way we run our fire department and even our, all of our safety forfe, forces, but it's just not about going out, putting out fires and, you know, showing up in an ambulance and doing things. Um, our, our people are, and our department is focused on the public and the ability to, uh, the We Thrive program, it really is about, it's almost like a public health organization, not just an emergency services organization. And, uh, that was, that was on display. I wa, I wasn't here, I wish I had been, but, um, you know, everything I've heard about is the mayor says. Uh, but it's right up, you know, where you set yourself up to do that. And, and you train for things and you do the We Thrive programs and the safe houses and you, and you let the people know that. Uh, and you set them up and you know what you're doing. And then when the opportunity arises, um, you know, we're there and, uh, they did a great job, so.
Yeah. And not only the fire department, but additionally, I know, uh, Lieutenant Pope was there and, uh, Sergeant from the police department was there. And again, I, I wish the public could get to see our people interact with the public and they would know, uh, you know, what these people are like, what they're like as people, what they, what they do. And, uh, rather than, because you're part of that We Thrive, uh, kudos to what you guys are doing over there. You really, really make the city look good and, and not only make us look good, but you're providing services to people that, uh, the general public don't get to see and know about. But that doesn't stop you all from doing what you need to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Also, you know, we have to give, um, Chief Jones and Assistant Chief, um, Hill and Officer Rebecca Davis, um, kudos for their vision for We Thrive. It took a lot of planning and that was his vision, um, Chief Jones was his vision. Um, and so we have to give him accolades for that. Um, and you know, it provides a great service, um, to the community.
One thing, I'll change subject here real quick. Um, one of the things I did want to let you know as part of the, uh, as part of, as part of this work session. Uh, if you hadn't been in the city hall lately, you might've noticed we've, um, well, we didn't have any heat for the longest time because there were a couple of months we've been putting in a new boiler. And, uh, so finally it's up and running, but as part of that project, uh, I really wanted to make sure that I let city council know. The, um, the project was really close to around $49,000. Our bid threshold is 50. Uh, if you remember back when we did the, uh, uh, state of emergency, we, we waived all the bidding requirements, but we've always tried not to, to, uh, we haven't had anything that really needed bidding out, uh, since, since, uh, that, that day. But anyway, that, we had a change order with another vendor, we had to knock a wall down to get the thing in. And, um, we had to get another vendor in there and bust out a wall and build it back. So it put us just a little over $50,000. But, uh, you know, it was, it's, it's because of a change order, not because we, um, it wasn't even, it wasn't even paid to the, uh, to the contractors, paid to a different contractor. So I just want to let you know, if you see something like that in the financials, that, uh, that's how that occurred. It's under the same project number, but it's two separate vendors and, uh, you know, just, it just put us over the $50,000 threshold, even though we'd waived the requirement. I still want to let you guys know that normally we would have brought that to council. Um, so if council has any issues or with it or wants us to do anything different, um, we can bring it. And, uh, if you want, but if not, I think we're, uh, was done properly and, uh, and we're comfortable with, uh, but she wanted to make sure that if you see something like that, that you know exactly what happened.
Okay. Uh, one final note, uh, this is an, uh, announcement, I'm sure you all probably saw this as well. Starting today, the, uh, school district went, uh, to the second phase of their plan where they have, uh, uh, the one group of students will be, uh, actually in, uh, actual attendance on Monday and Tuesday. Uh, and the second group is Thursday, Friday, Wednesday being a virtual day, virtual slash cleanup day. So, uh, there will be a lot more people and kids in and around city hall school area. So, uh, just, that's just for your information. Anything else for the good of the order? Anybody?
I just have a quick question to piggyback off of the school, um, funded learning model right now. The, um, in terms of, I know that we had discussed, uh, kind of, um, being that liaison between school and, um, city. There's both, there's a great many things happening, um, on that side that, that I think, um, you know, a lot of people do need to, uh, know a little bit more about and have more knowledge about. Um, so that it's nice and clear, uh, about when will we have that, um, that opportunity, at least next, they'll have that opportunity to, um, act in that function.
Uh, just to, uh, as, as I told you before, uh, just as a reminder, that committee that was, that, that situation that was set up, was set up, uh, with, uh, the school district and the members of council getting together, uh, those are, uh, for a specific reason. And that specific reason was when they were trying to A, run a tax levy and then B, to do, uh, uh, the bond issue building. Uh, the, those meetings are called at the request of, at the joint request of the, uh, board president and the person who is our, who, who was our liaison for that committee. Uh, so it, it, and they, the two of them would decide which items, uh, were to be discussed. We don't go with a built-in set of items, uh, from the council, nor do they come with a built-in set of items from the school board. Those two people have to jointly decide on A, when and if there are going to be meetings, and B, what items would be discussed. And we're limited in terms of items into things that are of mutual interest to both parties. So, uh, you would have to contact the school board president. Now, the president may himself or herself do it, or she may, or may assign some other member of the board. But that's the way it, it was set up and that's the way they prefer that it be done.
Right. I don't have any challenges with their, um, with their protocols. I just wanted to know, um, I think the introduction or, you know, uh, just wanted to have that approval and go ahead so that I can at least make that, make that known so they do know who to contact. So that in the event that they would like to call a meeting, um, you know, we can go about that kind of seamlessly as well. I will do that. Thank you.
I will, I, I will make sure that I, uh, I'll contact the board president and find out if she herself is going to be doing it or somebody else and whoever, whether it's her or somebody else, I'll pass that information on to you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Wade Cross, are we ready to move to the next, to the meeting?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, first and foremost, if there's no other business to come before the work session, we will adjourn that work session. And at this time, we will go into the actual council meeting. Uh, we give our call to order, the City of Forest Park Virtual City Council Meeting Number, uh, 1362, October 19, 2020. Uh, I would ask that at this time that, um, Councilwoman Ness to, uh, lead us, lead the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands. One nation under God.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the row?
Brown?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Pope?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ness?
Here.
Sylvester?
Here.
Uh, many show that all members are present. Item two on the agenda would be minutes. You should all have received copies of the minutes. Uh, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Your nine minutes will stand approved as presented. Item three is presentations. The first one would be Mr. Dieters, uh, with, uh, Energy Alliance.
Uh, good evening, council. Thanks for having me back again. I don't have much of a presentation. Um, basically just a bit of an explanation on the resolution that's before you. Um, the market, the gas market has been exceptionally volatile. Uh, many of our communities that we, uh, assist in these aggregation programs will designate, uh, either city manager or some other employee to be able to sign off if we get to the point where we can make a recommendation. I'll tell you right now, it's been very, very volatile in the gas market this last two weeks. And if, if you wanted to do it today, Energy Alliances would not recommend, uh, moving forward at this time because the price is just so, it's, it's, it's jumping 10% either way, uh, daily, weekly. Um, it's up about 10% from a couple of weeks ago when we first discussed this. And generally what we would do is we would allow, um, Mr. Jones, who's accessible pretty quickly to, if we, if we can get to a market position where we feel it's going to help the residents of Forest Park to come up with a stabilized price, that's also reasonable, we would come to him and be able to have him sign off in a matter of hours instead of waiting a couple of weeks. Those prices change every afternoon. So, and, and you have to remember also that this is a, this is a 12-month, 24-month or 36-month play. So as it moves, it's just not, you know, what the price would be this morning. So it'd be what the price would be this morning for the next 24 months and average that out along with the costs involved. So at this point, um, I would just ask that, that the council would give Mr. Jones the, the ability to sign that. And that would, that would activate the program.
Any questions for Mr. Dieters?
I have a question. I thought when we voted on this, you already had an idea. I mean, you know, when we are out here pushing this to the, um, residents, I thought you already had an idea as to when and this was going to start and all of that. So now we have to tell them something different?
Well, what I would tell residents is that the gas market is exceptionally volatile and we're going to start the program as soon as we find a dip in the market where we can justify, uh, putting them into a, a contract. Look at it this way, you know, I know what, what the GCR is going to be next month already for, for, uh, from the utility. And that's, as we talked about before, that's not, that's not a rate, that's just their recovery cost. And where the pricing is today, you know, I don't want to put them in a, in a rate that's five cents above the GCR right now, especially going into the winter.
I get that, but this is something we asked them, we put this on a ballot, we asked them to vote on this. Do you want this? Do you want this? Now it seems like it's being backpedaled. You're backpedaling.
I wouldn't say backpedaled, I would say it's a, it's, it's a market condition that we go through with, you know, 37 other plus communities that we've done for the last, you know, 12 years. And, and I can't in good conscience recommend something right now. But that's not to say that Wednesday morning, the market drops through the, through the floor and I go back to the city manager and say, okay, now we, now we, we need to put, we need to put this on net. We need to lock this price down. That's the condition, that's, that's the, that's the, that's what a commodity, you know, that's the dangers of a commodity.
Yeah, I wish we, I wish we had told the, um, our constituents, our, uh, community that from Jump Street before they voted on it. I mean, you know, we asked them, we were out there paddling that, asked them to vote on it. They agreed to it and it just, you know, because when people come to me and ask them like, oh my, you know, things haven't changed, when is this going to happen? I was under the impression that it was going to happen. We voted on this.
If someone would, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Dieters.
It, so what my answer to that would be, we're in the process of, of, of working with the pricing. Had, had we had the ability to do this three weeks ago, we didn't really have all the information at that time that we do now, we would have probably put it in at, at 36 or 37 cents. Now that price from the three vendors that issued prices was above 40 cents today. So I want to wait till it just drops back down. It might take a day or two or it might make a week, or I might come back and say, this thing's going through the roof. You know, what is your expectation at this point? But I don't want to.
Uh, I think that's, uh, I believe that's Councilwoman Ness. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Um, so I'm wondering if, um, you know, because I, I, um, I second your concern, um, Councilwoman Hall about just what the, the public perception would be. But I'm wondering if, um, another perspective, um, could be, that need, include these two elements. Um, the first being that when we did propose this aggregation to our residents, we, there were, they were within certain thresholds that we were committed to achieving. Um, in other words, we wanted to make sure that, um, the prices that we were able to secure, um, meant a significant saving to our residents than, than the going rate. And so there's that one element that we're actually waiting on and being true to that commitment to our residents because unless it was, it falls within those acceptable rates, we simply would not, we wouldn't move forward and lock that in as a city and stuff through the park. The second, um, the second managed point, I'm wondering, um, if we could, we could view it as, um, you know, Mr. Jones did not have, um, if I'm understanding this correctly, Mr. Jones didn't have the, um, have the ability or necessarily authorization to enter into an agreement immediately. Um, whereas now, if we, if we move forward, he can take advantage of those, um, fluctuating prices and at a moment's notice or within hours, and he has now the authority that we will be able to give him in order to secure that. Am I?
That's exactly, that's exactly correct.
Okay.
Uh, okay, any other questions from anybody else? I think, uh, I, I would just add to that, um, we, you, we were not allowed to do both the electric and the gas at the same time. We couldn't do, we, we could not do the gas until after we had done the other. Uh, I don't know that, I guess the bottom line question at this point is, right now, are our residents losing any, losing money or are the prices higher for them at the moment? You know, uh, I don't know that anybody's turned the heats on yet or whatever. But are, are, are people losing money right now? Or the price, the price has gone up significantly for our residents?
No, they're not losing money because, and, and to say, it's, that's a, that's a, that's, you gotta be careful with the term losing money.
I understand.
Because Duke gets whatever back, no matter whether it takes six months or a year. That, that's to be determined as to, you know, because Duke will get their money. That's the rule. They, it's a gas cost recovery. So, so I don't think that, that if you, if you, if somebody had that argument, they, they're doing okay right now. You know, we're just waiting kind of for, to see what's going to happen with the market in the next, you know, couple of weeks and, and go from there. I just, I just can't advise you in good conscience to take a 40 cent price over a one, two or three-year deal when the GCR, we believe, is going to sit November, December in the high threes. And then you're only three more months of winter. So I just want to make sure that, and I, I wouldn't, I, I, a, a fair, stable price is the goal here. And, and fighting that GCR is, is, is kind of fool's gold a little bit because you don't know if there's going to be adjustment later where folks are going to come back and the residents are going to have to go ahead and pay that adjustment if they shorted the gas at some point.
Okay, any other questions? From anybody else?
Well, we, we are in position to where you can act on a, on a cost that would, that you would deem to be an effective, effective cost for the residents. You can act on that at any day of the time.
Yeah, if Mr. Jones gets that authority, yes. I can, I can turn it around in an hour.
Okay, anybody else? And I believe that's one of the items that's on the agenda tonight is to give them that authority so that if, if something happens in the next day or so where the price goes down to what is deemed acceptable, can he immediately, he can immediately give the authority to do that.
Oh, that, that really says we were not in position to where we could have acted on it a week ago or two weeks ago.
Exactly. Why wasn't done sooner?
Because we can't, we couldn't do both at the same time because we did the electric first.
Well, yeah, okay. Technically, that's not correct. We were advised to wait to do the gas until it got closer to the winter. And, and the, the problem is at this time, Don does not have the authority. Any forward movement would have had to have been done by council. Because of the volatility, this resolution is on here to give them that authority to act quickly.
So why wasn't the authority given before now? I guess that's the big question. Why we gotta wait and then by the time he gets the authority, the price could have gone up versus down? Why could he have not had the authority before now?
Well, I guess, the, the, the short answer is because we didn't give it to them. Then the second part of that answer would be, we didn't give it to them because the, uh, we, the advice or the, uh, was at that time was, let's do one before we do the other.
But. The GCR for the last four months has been in the mid 25 cent to 30 cents. We couldn't come anywhere near that. And I think that that, that, that perspective, that it wouldn't have, it would have been a bad look, I think. And if you want to talk about losing, that, that is a, that would be a, you know, a 10.
No, I guess you're kind of missing my point. Whether the price is low today or high today, he could have had authority a long time ago to go in to. he could have had authority long time ago to go in to give you the go-ahead. That's my thing. Why, you know, not you, but why was he not given the authority long time ago, whether he used it or not at that time, but it was available to him in case he needed it? So by the time we give it to him between now and in the morning, the price could have changed. He doesn't have the authority. That's my thing.
Well, as I said, that, that falls on us because we're the only one that can give him the authority.
I know that.
We were operating on the basis of what we were being told and the advice we were being given. And the, the, further to do one at a time rather than trying to do both at the same time. Anything else? Yes, sir, Mr. Sylvester.
Uh, no, I'll, I'll just, I'll just hold on to questioning it. It's, they don't need, they don't need to put another belt on the hardtail, so.
Anybody else?
I just have a quick, and, and probably, I'm sure you've already, maybe I missed this, but um, because this price was in the, you know, the mid-twos and then we went, and then it jumped up and now it's in the forties. Is there at all a valve where if we can't, if, if we're not seeing those prices that lasted for the four months previous to now, which we were kind of anticipating and, and relying on, is there an opportunity for us to be able to lock in another lower price that's closer to that after this? Or is it just this, we only get one shot to lock it in?
Well, you'll get, we're gonna make a recommendation if, with, when the, when the market turns a little bit. But the, the price was never in the twos for aggregation programs. That was only for the Duke GCR. We never, the, these haven't, these are all futures prices, so they don't really fluctuate that, that much. If, but that's what we're hoping for is a dip in the futures market because we don't buy this stuff spot. We have programs like the City of Cincinnati that do buy it on a settled date of the twenty-fourth of the month. But there's no guarantee of anything and they, they really fluctuate and the winters are generally, are generally pretty high because that's when gas gets expensive.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody else going once? Twice? If none, we'll move on to the next item on the presentation. Actually, the next several items are all business of the month designation, Mr. Jones, Paul is not here. I think he put these on the agenda just to be read off and are you gonna deal with that one?
Sally, do you have that list? I'm trying to find my list.
I do, I have it.
Are these just informational, Sally, that he put them on here so we could know what the businesses were?
Yes.
So if you will take a look at items under presentations, items B through H, that would be April through October. Those are the listings of the companies that were designated as businesses of the month. Uh, and obviously because we're not having live meetings, the representatives of those companies would, have been notified by Paul and their awards will be made, delivered to them.
Correct.
Chuck, it was Don not having the list in front of him. Would you like me to read them off so that we can acknowledge them for the public that is watching?
Sure, go right ahead.
The April Business of the Month award would go to Faxon Machining and that's, the May is for Home Depot. The June is for Kroger. The July is for Shooter's Sports Bar and Grill. The August is for Dr. Stephen Wilson. The September was for Wild Birds Unlimited and this month, October, is for Enriching Spaces. And we thank all of them for the investments that they've made in our community and for the services that they give to our community.
Any other comments from anybody else regarding the presentations? And the business of the months, businesses of the month? If not, again, on behalf of the city and the council, we would like to thank all these businesses for uh, being in Forest Park and for all the contributions they make to our city. And we'll move to item number four, communications from the public. Mr. Jones, do we have any people, anybody to sign up?
No, we didn't have any, anyone that specifically mentioned wanting to be on the agenda. However, I did receive a letter, so I'll just mention the contents of it rather than mention the person's name. And really, as they were concerned about the, the parking over, over the sidewalks and cars, you know, old cars and unrunning cars in the parked in driveways and on the street. And, and so forth, so. And then there were some, some pictures associated with cars parked over the driveway. So that really is an issue and again, and we're trying to crack down on it. But I'll just remind the public that number one, that don't park your car over the driveway, particularly since school is going to be starting again here. We don't want the kids, but the, the issue that this lady had was with someone in a wheelchair. And remember that if you park in front of a driveway, that person in a wheelchair can't get past you without going out in the street. And so be a good neighbor and, and don't do it, even if you're only in there for a second, you're only gonna be in there for a minute. Or even if it's the middle of the night when you come home from work and you think you'll be gone. Um, you know, by seven o'clock the next morning, there might be somebody that needs to get by. And we will be ticketing significantly. Anyone who does that, particularly since school started. Uh, the kids are gonna be back in again. And we don't want our kids, the ones that do have to walk to school, to have to walk out into the, into the street just to get down the sidewalk. So. Um, that was her concern and it's a legitimate concern. And we are gonna do our best to clamp it down as best we can. Other than that, there was nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
But Don, this is not, this is not something new. Because especially on Kemper, right there at the city, all down Kemper, they park across the sidewalk all the time. When I was out canvassing the neighborhood, it's done all over. So why are we acting like this is something new that we are going to get on? When it happened, it's been going on, nothing has changed. That's my problem. Nothing has changed. And you keep saying, we're gonna get on it. When are you gonna get on it?
Well, they've been getting on it for quite a while. They don't see every one of these instances. We don't have that many policemen out doing it. So when we're made aware of it, I can tell you personally that I've, I've called the police on several people and asked them to go by and do it. So next time that I would suggest that any council member that's out, you all have the phone number, you can call me, you can call the police department. Call them on the, call them on the phone and tell them and they'll dispatch somebody right away and they will give that person a ticket. That's all we can do. But we can't see every single one of them and every single time. So all we can do is let the public know that they shouldn't be doing it and that they're gonna get a ticket if we catch them. We just can't catch everybody. So I agree with you. It, it, I think it comes and goes. Over the last six months with COVID, there's been, I think, a general increase in some of this. And we've pretty much-
On Kemper, it, it's an ongoing thing. It has always been a problem on Kemper. COVID has nothing to do with it. Everybody went blank COVID now. Has nothing to do with it.
Where's Denise, where specifically on Kemper are we talking about?
If you go next, if you go right next to the school or the church and come all the way down, go west on Kemper, nine out of ten, you're gonna find cars parked either on the lawn or across the sidewalk.
Are you talking about across, across when going toward?
Leave the city, okay, leave the city, go west. Omega Church, go west. All the way down, Kemper.
Well, I could tell you this, what we'll do is that'll be a targeted area and I'll make sure the police department targets that area. So that we can make sure that in that particular area, we know that we're gonna be at least eliminating it there or the folks will be getting tickets. And of course, we'll also try and do it throughout the rest of the city, but if that's an issue that, that, that is a really bad area that this is common in, and you're right, and if it's around the schools, it's, it's even worse. And I could just tell you that we'll target that area and try and change behavior. That's all we can do because sometimes you can't change behavior just by giving somebody a ticket. That, it's, it's really, you, you can't make people respect each other just because you're giving them a ticket. It's all about personal respect for your individual citizens and needing and your neighbors. And we can't teach that, but we can sure have a little bit of incentive for people to, to be more friendly to each other and take it, you know, what they're doing.
Mr. City Manager.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. But just, speaking of the incentive, can you just, just for the record, let everyone know how much tickets could potentially be just for doing that?
I'm not sure exactly what the ticket amount is, but I'll be glad to let, we'll publicize that tomorrow.
I, I would like, just point to, I, I think to add, to add and ask John, when, when somebody's ticketed for, no matter what, what it is, if they go to court, there's a, there's the cost of the, you know, if they're filing guilty, there's the cost of the ticket and then there's the cost, then there's the additional court cost that goes with it. However, the court has a discretion of setting aside parts of that. Uh, so John, if you would enlighten us a little bit on that, how that works?
Yes. If a person pays a ticket out, they pay only that fine and that fine is already on a schedule of fines that the city has. If they come into court either to contest the fine or because they're required to be in court, in addition to that scheduled fine is a ninety-dollar court cost charge. And those court costs get, my understanding is it's a, gets distributed amongst the state and the city and that's just a cost, it's not a fine. The mayor, if he is presiding or our magistrate, does have the authority to lessen the fine or even forgive the court costs. That's typically done when there's a situation of indigency or if, although a person might plead guilty, they have a very acceptable sympathetic or empathetic statement under the circumstances which we've had. But one thing I think everyone should know is if you ignore the, the ticket, all of a sudden, you're going to get a KPS issued against you. Our clerk of court sends that to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles and the Motor Vehicle Bureau then puts a hold on your license renewal, your license registration, your license plates. You, you are essentially unable to update all of your information as required by the BMV. So we, you know, with, as Ms. Holt said, the COVID excuse, we're having lots of people not showing up, but that is not stopping us from having a KPS issued, which means if that has been done, you better get in, see the clerk of courts and take care of it. Otherwise, you're in trouble now with the BMV. So that's a general overview, but all of our fines are by a schedule that we have.
Okay. I know, in, in addition to that, let me add at this point that having been in the two of the last three staff meetings, I can tell you that these issues have been discussed quite at length in staff meetings with the, not only with the police department, but with property maintenance people and to the extent of giving even the property maintenance people the authority to cite. Uh, and we have been looking at ways to get, to, to get better, to do better at this. Uh, part of the, part of the added problem to this, whether it's parking in no parking areas or parking hanging over the sidewalk, is the number of people that we have, police that we have on the street in the, from the late, from the evening hours to early mornings, is less than we have during the day. Uh, I can tell you from personal experience that there are a couple of situat-, uh, Mill Road is an, as an example. There is to be no parking on Mill Road. But almost any night after dark, people park on Mill Road. Now, one of the things that I have taken to doing, and I, I could say Don has too, because he makes it a point to drive that way, either going home or coming, coming to work, is getting the licensed number of those people and passing that on. One of the direct causes of this is unfortunately, and I know for those of you who've been around five or, or years or more, and you're right Denise, it's not COVID, it's just personal habit. People don't use their garages for the purposes which they were built. And because they don't and because more and more people living in any given household have more and more cars, they look for close places to park them. And in most instances, if you have four cars in a drive, the last two cars are very likely to overhang the sidewalk. Because most of the driveways in Forest Park are not that long. So that's, that, that's one of the issues. Then you have the other added issue, and I'll never be able to understand this one. We have certain places in Forest Park and certain properties that have become parking lots. I mean, residential places, people's houses and drives, that have become parking lots. There is one in particular, and I guarantee you, I don't care what time of day or night you go by there, if you could drive slow enough and count between those two, two tenants, two air, two groups there, you will be able to count anywhere from fourteen to twenty cars, pickups and motorcycles. And when we stop them from park, overhanging the drive, they go across the street on Mill Road. There's a large wide grassy area over there where they park. Now, there is no parking in Mill Road. I can tell you, I've been told, well, we don't, you know, there are no signs up there. But it's, you know, it's not been any parking over there ever since it's been Mill Road. You know, I guess what we're gonna have to do, you know, we're gonna have to post signs all along places that people are not supposed to park. Now, that's not to say that'll stop it. But I know that's one of the things that out of the staff meeting that has been, that, that's going to be done. It's, it's not an easy situation. And the worst of it to me and is there are people who are parked legally, but it creates a problem. Best example of that is Lincolnshire. Almost all of those people are legally parked, but that street is so narrow that it creates a hazard. You can't, you can't ticket people when they're legally parked, no matter how much you don't like it. I try not to go down that street for that reason, because I'm afraid that I'm gonna get hit almost every time I go down there. Nobody wants to, as I think was Donovan said, nobody wants to respect the right of the other person. Nor, I don't even know if they teach in driver's ed anymore, which side has the right of way. Because I was way back when I got my license, god, a hundred years ago, I was told that if cars are parked on the side in, in the direction that I am traveling, I'm supposed to get over out of the way so the other people on the other side can pass. Hey, well, that's a lost cause. That's gone. But as long and as short of it is, yeah, Denise, I agree. We, we have to do better now. We're gonna have to also be willing to take the heat for it. Because people are going to jump on us for doing this, so, you know, to make money. Well, we aren't gonna make a lot of money by ticketing people for parking, but if that's what we have to do, that's where we'll go.
And I think posting some signs on Mill will justify the ticket that they would get for parking there in a no parking zone. But one other thing I wanna bring up, Don, since you said you've been going through this, the house, and I go back to the same house.
I know where you're at.
Next to the church. It, it, my blood boils every time I go by the house. Their garbage is- Their garbage is stationary in the front of the house. The trash can sits there right at their step. And you said you've been working on this ever since you've been here. That garbage can still sits in that same spot. When are we gonna do something about it?
Well, I can, I can respond to that one, which is part, like, part of like the grass. When we ticket people, as long as they come and pay the fine, that's about the extent that we can do. People would rather in some cases pay fine than to, than to do what they're supposed to do. All we can do is keep giving them the tickets. Now, the other thing that we can do, as we deal with the grass, we're gonna have to attach, we're gonna have to tack on an additional money for service fees to make the fine higher enough so people don't mind paying, don't wanna pay it. But as long as, I, I find it too low, but we can't, we're somewhat regulated by how much we can charge somebody for a fine.
But if you charge them every week, because it's out there every week, if you charge them every week, they will stop.
Hopefully. Well, in some cases they will, in some they won't. A prime example is a guy up on, in the eighth section that's running a garage out of his, running a fixing place out of his garage. And he gets ticketed all the time, he just pay him, because he thinks he makes more money doing otherwise. Okay.
I'll drive back by that house again. Thought he was compliant there for at least a few months. Because I went by there for a long time, he was okay. So I'll go back by there again tomorrow, we'll take care of that.
Well, I haven't been up there since Saturday or Sunday, so it was there, the garbage was in the front. The last day I went was Saturday or Sunday.
Before we move on, let me say one final thing on this, and this is not just for overhanging drives or parking. It, it's for anything. Ask council members. Please, when you see a violation, no matter what it is, where it is, please report it. Because I guarantee you, and it shouldn't be this way, but it's human nature, a report from you will carry probably more weight than a report from Joe Public. Now, that's not to say that's right, but in essence, you're their boss, so they'll listen. But let's get into the habit of reporting, you know, I, I make it a habit of doing it, because.
Well, I gotta miss.
Frankly, I think Forest Park is going, is going in the direction that we, that we're trying to reverse. And maybe we need to step up the reversal of it somewhat. Okay.
Wait a minute, I got one more question. I had one of our, one of our residents in the Mill Road station called me about the people living next to them that got chicken coops. My understanding was they had to have a fence, and the chicken coop had to be inside of that fence.
I don't think, I don't think we allow chickens at all.
No, I, it was, I thought this long thing came out that it was agreed that they allowed chickens, but no roosters. But we did go through that whole thing, right?
Yeah, and we're going through it even more and more.
Okay, okay, that's all I need, that's all I need to know. Those chickens are gone.
I'd, I'd get after that homeowners association.
As long as the city agrees, then they think they can do it, they would in hope when we try to tell them, no, no, no.
I, I'm telling you, we don't allow it, so you, you can tell them, it's got to go.
All right.
All right. Five reports in standing committee, the first of all is Public Safety Councilwoman Ness. Uh, Councilwoman Ness, one question before you start, if you don't mind. It should be Clark, right?
I would prefer, please.
Okay, well, I just want, you know, I'm, I'm just reading what's here, so we, we will make that correction in the future, all right?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Committee Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Uneventful over here, I did want to simply do a, a big thank you and kind of make a little bit of a note on the issue that you referred to, Mr. Mayor, at, in our work session, that our fire department and, and police handled so, so tactfully professionally and even compassionately. Just wanted to give, give our, give certain folks a shout out on that. Suzie Solzman and Tim Getz, Sergeant DeSalvo and Sergeant Dryer and Tony Pope, Lieutenant Tony Pope, of course, with the rest of the department, and of course with Jermaine, Jermaine Hill and Chief, Chief Jones. This is one instance where, when we talk about what community policing looks like and, and our services and how we can, you know, pull from other services and call in who needs to be there, because they're not certain. You know, it's not a, a, a domestic dispute, it's not something violent, but it's truly a si- a situation that requires expert facilitation of help. And, and, and we were there to, to do that, and I'm just extraordinarily proud about the work that, that those departments have. And of course, Councilwoman Moore, the We Thrive event, if, or I'm sorry, not event, but organization underpinned at the firehouse. So in the event that someone needs services or they need to reach out and they don't necessarily need to call the police, they can call the city building and we can direct them. That's five one three five nine five five two eight five. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Clark? Hearing now, for the next work session, which will be on the twenty fifth, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
I do not.
Next report is Public Improvement and Facility, Mr. Sylvester.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have no report at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Sylvester? Hearing now, Mr. Sylvester, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, sir.
Next report, item C, Ways and Means, Councilwoman Hurd.
Yeah, I did want to highlight something from our Economic Development Commission, which we know about from our conversations with Paul. Back in, earlier this year, when the CARES Act was passed, we received CARES funding and earmarked it for small business assistance. And Paul had provided us with a list of eleven local small businesses that have received assistance through that to help them comply with COVID requirements on businesses. And eight of, eight of those eleven are minority and women owned businesses, which was very nice. There is, there is a possibility that there is still monies available that before the program is closed out. So if there are other small businesses out there, just let them know to contact Mr. Brim. I also wanted to note some results of some economic or environmental awareness program, programs that have taken place over this year. The tree removal program has ended for this year. Thirty-five households took advantage of our fifty percent subsidy and a total of sixty-nine dead or dying trees were removed this year. To date, over the three years of our program, a hundred and fifteen households have had approximately two hundred dead and dying trees removed. But not only are we dealing with dead and dying trees, we're also reforesting Forest Park. And that program has ended for this year. Fifty households received eighty of the hundred trees we had available for planting, and the other remaining twenty trees will generally go into use by our Public Works Department. The other program is the used tire program, which took place on Saturday, September twenty-sixth. Fifty-five households brought in two hundred and twenty-five used tires, or two point eight tons of tires that are recycled. And I did want to also mention, we are not having a community paper shredding event in Forest Park this year. But there is a community paper shredding event going on in Springdale this weekend, tomorrow. I'm not sure of the time, but I noticed it on, when I was traveling down Route Four today. So they have the big sign out, so if you're, if you're interested, check it out tomorrow. It probably will begin sometime in the morning through probably early afternoon. So, and you might be able to find it on our website, which is of course, forestpark.org backslash environmental. That concludes my report.
Where is it? Where's the shredding at?
Well, it's advertised outside the community center, so I would suspect that it's probably taking place at the community center in Springdale.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
It's from, it's from nine thirty to twelve thirty.
And it is at the community center in, in Springdale?
And I don't know, like I said, I, I, my cellphone, I would check it out on the website, but I don't have my cellphone with me right now.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's probably on our website, because we would probably advertise those things.
Okay.
Two items on the agenda for the next work session, reappraisalings ordinance and amendment to COVID funds. Anything else to add?
No, sir.
Next committee report is Community Development, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time, but I would like to thank the residents for completing their twenty, twenty census. And when you go on census.gov, you can see our percentage rate of residents who, or households who completed the census. And the city of Forest Park was at sixty-nine point six percent of self-reported. And that is compared to the state of Ohio's rate of seventy point seven percent. And so this is very important because it can impact community resources, funding for our community. And also the number is very important because of that sixty-nine point six percent, fifty-seven point eight percent used the internet to complete their census. So we need to look at that number of where we disseminate the information regarding programs and services for our residents. And so of course, I did compare it to other cities, and we, we did fairly well compared to our adjacent communities. But I just wanted the residents to know that the census does matter, and thank you for taking time out of your schedules to complete that. And of course, it was cut short this year, but we're hoping in the next ten years, we'll really rally behind increasing that number and getting the word out and assisting residents in completing the census. So that completes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Moore? Councilwoman Moore, I have no items for you. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I do not.
Next committee is Law Committee, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any reports to add at this time, but just to echo off of Councilwoman Clark's sentiments. And I just had a question. I don't know if you or Don or Councilwoman Moore can answer this. I wanted to know generally, how, how many calls to service do we get regarding situations of that nature? And, and in particular, where did the, the, the person who reached out for services, did they hear about, you know, the list of services that Forest Park has to offer like that, just so we can mention them again here for anyone else who is watching and going through anything similar?
Well, I don't, I don't know how this particular person heard about it, but I can just repeat that she did mention that she was aware of the We Thrive program and the Safe House program that we have. And that she purposely sought assistance in Forest Park because of things that she had heard about the services that we provide. Now, in terms of the number of instances and cases that, that we see, I don't have a number, I don't know, probably the only people, only person or people that would have those numbers would be those people involved with the program as well. Keep in mind that in a lot of instances, we're dealing with minors. And we don't, we don't put out any, any more information than is absolutely necessary to protect their privacy. Okay. Okay, the Councilman Brown, I don't have any items on the agenda for you for the next meeting. If you don't have any to add, but I would ask you to, sometimes, oh, tomorrow or later in the evening, if you give me a call, there is a situation, not a situation, that there's some information I want to pass on to you that might be, that, that you might look into for, for us. Okay, next committee is Human Resources Committee, Councilwoman Holt.
I had a lot to say tonight, but I do not have a report on the Human Resource Committee tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not, thank you.
Last committee report is the Government Relation and Communication. That one is mine. I have no report for, on that committee. I would ask any questions if there are any. Now, we will move next to item number six, the mayor's report. Just a couple of informational things. One, probably at the next, at the November meeting, first or second, we will announce to you or will give you information regarding those people, those people who were selected by the Hall of Fame Advisory Committee to be, to receive, to be appointed to the Forest Park Hall of Fame. And though, again, because of COVID, there were, obviously, we didn't have the dinner this year, so those would be, will be hand delivered along with certificate, plaques and certificates. Also, would just like to, again, re, reemphasize the fact that, that schools started back, and we need to be, we want the public to please be aware of that situation and be careful out there. Keep in mind that kids will be going to school very early. I believe the first at the high school, they have to be there, the first group of kids have to be there by seven o'clock. So, again, be, be careful of that. I will mention, and Don may talk more about this in his report, but the last, the last reports from the, from the governor's office, from the governor's press conferences regarding COVID nineteen, I think everybody may know, may, may not know that Hamilton County is back in the red and has been for the last couple of weeks or so. The numbers tend to be continuing to go up, not only in Hamilton County, but a very, very significant number of counties in the state have gone red again. There are a lot of reasons for that, none of which is, is good. And if you listen to medical science, contrary to what we hear from a particular candidate of not listening to scientists, the winter, they expect that the numbers are gonna go up because of the time of year that we're getting into. That given the fact that we always have to deal with the flu at the same time that we'll be dealing with this. And common sense would tend to say that, once you have situations where people are in larger groups for periods of time, those numbers will go up even more. So, the, the take home is, we cannot be lax in following the, the guidelines that are out there, meaning we, we can't stop wearing masks, we can't stop doing the social distancing. We, we can't, can't go back to having large group activities. When I'm saying we, I mean, we personally and we as a city, we have to be, we have to be vigilant. And, and we have to keep in mind that this thing is, is not gonna just go away because we want it to go away. But let's be mindful of other people, whether we like the particular guidelines or rules or not. If you don't want to do it for yourself, do it for the safety of others. And the city is going to, and will continue to follow that, follow that philosophy. We, we did not open up when the, the guidelines were relaxed, and we have no intentions of opening up now. I think it would be the, the wrong thing to do. We, we need to be safe. We need to have a safe place for our citizens, we need to have safe. We need to have safe places for our employees and for the public in general. So that would be the end of my report. I'll try to answer any questions if there are any.
Might I just, might I just make a suggestion? And Dr. Moore, you can correct me on this if you will, but I would suggest that people take their flu shot. They're free all over the city of Cincinnati, take your flu. And the older people, take your pneumonia shot. I've had both of mine. I take my zinc every day and I, I'm fine. So I would suggest, that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Good, good idea. Let, let's all do everything that we can to keep ourselves healthy. I have learned over the years that the older you get, the more you got to look at being healthy and the more you have to look at and accept the fact, can't do what you used to do twenty years ago. It's just a given. Okay. Well, in my report, we will go next to item seven, city manager, Mr. Jones.
Well, I'll just echo exactly what's been said earlier tonight. Particularly, the, the city is and continues to be shut down. We're consistent in, in, in the way we handle things. And when we say shut down, we are not having or sponsoring or allowing on our property, whether it's in a park or whether it's at one of our facilities, large groups or any kind of gatherings that could act to spread the virus. We want to be as safe as possible and we continue to do that. We are making numerous changes to all three floors of our municipal building. The tax office is almost complete. And the objective there is to isolate employees or at least separate employees so that they're not working right on top of each other. And also to provide barriers when they're working with the public, again, to protect the employees and to protect the public as well when we get into more of a routine, even after this is over, if that ever occurs. Again, I suggest that we continue to wear masks. They're still mandatory in the building. And following up on councillor Holt, don't forget your shingle shot. I just had one.
I've had that and it ain't fun, folks.
It ain't fun. I had my first.
It's a two-part. They don't have it.
Come, come in December, I got the second, I'll take the second part if they got it, if it's there. But yeah, take the flu shots and just really just protect yourselves. The, other than that, Halloween, I'll, I'll remind everyone.
Thank you, thank you.
December thirty-first, from six to eight. We know that people are going to do it. We recommend that people don't. But we can't, you know, we can't enforce it to the point if, if you're going to do it, you're going to allow your kids to do it. Please follow the CDC guidelines and as best you can. And finally, I'm not sure if we'll have another meeting before then. I don't think we will, but I want to remind folks about November third, Election Day. Many, many folks are voting already through the mail and showing up at the board of elections. But there are seven polling locations in Forest Park. For those who are going to vote on Election Day, I've talked to the board of elections. They assure me that they're taking all precautions to make it safe, not only for the people who work at the polls, but for the people who are going to show up at the polls and vote. Those locations, we'll post it on our website, but they're, don't, you just can't show up at any of these. So from a public standpoint, make sure you understand where you need to go. Show up to the poll that you're supposed to go to, the represent your precinct. But Quinn Chapel, Forest Chapel, Quinn Chapel on Southland, Forest Chapel on West Sharon, Forest Park Senior Center, we'll have voting at our senior center as well. On Kemper Road, Christian on Hanover, Ward of Deliverance on Fresno, Inspirational Baptist on Sebring, and Alpha Omega Baptist on Kemper. Those are the seven locations, I believe, yes?
There's eight, day spring.
Okay. These are the seven provided by, by, uh, invited to me. If there's an eighth, we'll find out about it and make sure it gets posted.
Day spring, day spring.
Where, where's it at, the day spring?
Day spring.
Day spring church, I'm smiling.
Yeah, it's not on the list here. So we'll find out, anyway, I'll verify that tomorrow. Get the most up-to-date list and, and we will post that on our website and make sure that it's available. Get into our website. We're going to migrate to a new website here over the next, over this week. So there may be a, a time, maybe on Thursday, that it may not be available, but it should only be intermittent. We're turning off the old one and turning on the new one. And it takes about, according to Rob, about twenty-four to forty-eight hours to cycle through. Get, I guess, to get out to all of the, through the internet to know where we're at. So, but since most of our folks were accessing it from Forest Park, it shouldn't, they shouldn't see any or very little disruption if they're trying to get to our website. But if they do, that's the reason. But we'll be, we'll be converting that over the next, over this week. So other than that, it'll be available if anybody has any questions.
Any questions?
This is, so this is the training that you were talking about, Chuck? I know I got an email.
Yes.
It, it's part of that.
If you don't go to the training, can you go on the system and learn it yourself?
Sally, can you answer that?
You can, but I would have to show you how to get in there and everything. But the training is about thirty minutes.
Okay.
Okay, any question for city manager? The only thing that I would add to what Don has said in regards to Halloween. One of the things that the governor mentions in his guidelines, that's been, we've done it every year, or it's been there every year. But this time, I think we need to really pay attention to it. That is, if you choose not to participate, not to be a participant, that is, they have people come to your door, whatever. You're asked to please turn off your outside lights or turn off your lights. And the other side of that is people for the community, if you see a house where the lights are off, please respect those people's rights not to participate and don't go to that particular house. With that, we will move next to other reports, first of those being the law director, Mr. Whitehouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have an opportunity to review resolution thirty-six, twenty twenty, giving the city manager the authority to, with certain limitations, enter into a gas aggregation agreement. Also reviewed disclaimer that the city is going to use when citizens retain the services of rumpie for big dumpsters placed on their property. Other than that, that would be the end of my report unless you have any questions.
Any questions for law director? Hearing nine, we will move next to the clerk of counsel, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that resolution numbers thirty-three dash twenty twenty through thirty-five dash twenty twenty were posted as required. And that concludes my report.
Questions for clerk of counsel? Hearing nine, we will move next to item number nine, new business, and I believe there's a motion.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I would move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolutions number thirty-six dash twenty twenty through forty dash twenty twenty by title only.
Second.
Moved in second that we suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolutions thirty-six, twenty twenty through forty, twenty three, twenty by title only. Is there any discussion?
This posted as required.
Here's now, hearing nine, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Clark?
Hello?
She forgot her name.
I did.
All right.
It's not bad.
Yes.
Thanks Denise. Nobody would have known.
Okay. First item on the new business resolution number thirty-six dash twenty twenty, would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number thirty-six dash twenty twenty. A resolution to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement on behalf of the city of Forest Park, Hamilton County, Ohio, with a supplier to be named later, for natural gas supply to the city of Forest Park, Forest Park Natural Gas Aggregation Program. The city manager can execute a master service agreement not to exceed thirty-nine cents per CCF. The city manager can, can enter into subsequent agreements with regard to this program to reduce costs as needed.
Is there a motion, Mr. Councilwoman Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I moved that we adopt resolution number thirty-six dash twenty twenty.
Again.
And move the second that we adopt resolution thirty-six dash twenty twenty. Is there any discussion, councilwoman Moore?
Yes, just briefly, we discussed this in the work session and throughout the council meeting. Staff recommends that approve of this resolution that allows the city manager, manager to enter into a agreement with a supplier named at a later date and not to exceed thirty-nine cents per CCF. And residents can opt out or en at any time. And so this was posted six days prior to this meeting and I urge adoption.
Any further discussion? Hearing nine, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution thirty-six twenty twenty?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is item B, resolution number thirty-seven twenty twenty. Would the clerk please read that resolution by title only?
Resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty twenty. A resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capitol Improvement and our local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required.
Is there a motion, Mr. Sylvester?
Uh, yes, I moved to adopt resolution thirty-seven dash twenty twenty.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt resolution thirty-seven dash twenty twenty. Is there any discussion, Mr. Sylvester?
Just a follow-up from what has been stated, the council has received a recommendation to, to approve this resolution to authorize the city manager and the finance director to apply for the funding due to state capital improvements program. This funding will assist with the paving of West Kemper Road, Hanover Road, and Ken Road. The estimate cost is, of the improvement is two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. And with this applying for the funding, we're looking at applying for one hundred and nine thousand and seventy-seven dollars. And this would give it a roughly fifty percent of the cost of the total project. So with that stating and given, I make the motion that the council adopt this resolution.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing nine, the clerk please call the roll on thirty-seven dash twenty twenty.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Herbie?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-seven twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item is item C, resolution thirty-eight dash twenty twenty. Clerk, please read that resolution by title only.
Resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty. A resolution to renew an engineering agreement with CT consultants for engineering services to the city of Forest Park.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Erden?
Yeah, I would move adoption of resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty.
Second.
And move in second that we adopt resolution thirty-eight dash twenty twenty. Is there discussion?
Yes. This and the next two resolutions are actions we take yearly to renew contracts that we have with engineering firms on an as-needed basis, that they stand by in case we need them. And one of the things about this is, these are, there are very few people that do this. So these have expertise in these areas, which is one of the reasons that we call on them. Number two, we have used these people for a number of years. And one of the assets to us is that they have longstanding understanding of the areas that they cover within our city. CT consultants, we consult if we need a variety of things, but particularly in the area of architectural and landscaping to traffic and to civil engineering. So I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing nine, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution thirty-eight twenty twenty?
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-eight twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item D, resolution thirty-nine dash twenty twenty. Clerk, please read this resolution by title only.
Resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty. A resolution authorizing the city manager to renew the contract with Burgess and Nyquil Limited.
Is there a motion, this councilwoman?
I would move adoption of resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Moved in second that we adopt resolution thirty-nine dash twenty twenty. Is there discussion?
Uh, yes, this is the second of these contracts. This one is with Burgess and Nyquil that helps us with our store water utility and detention basin design work. And I would urge adoption of this resolution.
Any further discussion? Now, would the clerk please call, call the roll on resolution thirty-nine twenty twenty?
Moore?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Resolution thirty-nine twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item is item E, resolution forty dash twenty twenty. Would the clerk please by title only?
Resolution number forty dash twenty twenty. A resolution authorizing the city manager to renew a contract for engineering services with Branstadter Carroll, Inc.
Is there a motion, uh-huh, Councilwoman Erden?
Uh, yes, I would move adoption of this resolution, number forty dash twenty twenty.
Second.
Moving second that we adopt resolution forty dash twenty twenty. Is there discussion?
Yeah, Branstadter and Carroll provide us with assistance on our street improvement program. I want to make note, because I think this came up last year. This is not for the actual resurfacing. Those are usually contracted out as we need people to do our resurfacing. This is for the engineering aspects. And again, this is a, a very specialized area and we have dealt with it before. So I would urge adoption of this, um, resolution.
Any further discussion? Hearing nine, would the clerk please call the roll on resolution forty dash twenty twenty?
Clark? It's you, Chelsea.
Yes. I said, yes. I did say it. I am.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Resolution forty twenty twenty passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item F is a motion.
Uh, yes. I would move to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
Moved in second to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing nine, all those in favor of the motion, let me know by the sign of voting aye.
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 Post? Motion passed unanimously. Uh, have no more items on the agenda, but I do have one question for Mr. Sylvester. When is the next playoff game? Who do they? Who do they play?
When?
Playoff to what?
It's a done deal.
Playoff's over? I thought they were moving for Friday?
What?
Reggie?
I believe so, yeah.
Well, I just, I just remember that the last meeting, you may, you know, you, uh, announced, you know, to congratulate them on their season.
Congratulate, congratulating on, on them moving into the playoffs.
Yeah, I thought you might have been following it. All right, I'm sure somebody will tell us. Anything else for the good of the order? Anything else for the good of the order? There's no, nothing, uh, you all stay safe, try to keep everybody else safe and in the event that we don't meet on the twenty-sixth, uh, we probably will not, then don't forget, people, you know, we got a meeting, uh, next council meeting would then be on the second. Is that right? Yeah. So, see you then. Be good, be careful.
Wear those masks and be safe. Protect me.
Bye.